The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Joint City Council and Board of Finance for Wednesday, February 13th. I'd like to ask all of you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the members of the Joint Board, please introduce themselves, starting on my far left.
Mike Lamoth, Board of Finance.
That's right. This is left. Cheryl Tevo, Board of Finance.
Josh Maderos, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Peter Kelly, City Council.
You're up.
And you know me already.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on January 8th, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the Consent Calendar, items 2A through I. Is there anyone here that would like to pull off any of the items as currently presented on the Consent Calendar for additional discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3 is to make an additional appropriation of $860 within the Emergency Management Operating Budget funded by grant revenue.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 4 is to transfer $200,000 within the School Projects Capital Projects Fund for Green Hill's legal fees.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there a discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may. Can we just get an update? I mean, it's been a while. Is this still the heating system? Is that still the problem? Is that basically what this is about?
I believe it is, yes.
And where are we? Is this... Obviously, we're trying to recoup the funds, I would think. That would be part of the suit, isn't it?
It is part of it. We received a brief confidential update within, I think, the last Board of Finance meeting, but we are still in litigation, hoping to avoid further litigation, but it is on one of our subcontractors. Did you want to add anything, Roger? Okay, no. I'm going to make you come up, anyway.
I don't really have anything to add. Quite simply, I believe that they had planned for there to be a formal court process in February. That's been delayed again, pending further actions taken by Corporation Council and the other side's council.
And our insurance carrier.
And our insurance carrier.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 5 is to transfer $15,000 from the General Fund Contingency Account to Employee Benefits.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6 is to make an additional appropriation of $2,100,000 within the Capital Projects Fund funded by bonding and approval of a resolution appropriating $2.1 million for acquisition of Shrub Road Parcels Open Space Grant Application.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mayor. At our Board of Finance meeting, you're aware that we had introduced either an amendment to this or a separate motion that before the 2.1 is final, that once we know the amount of the grant that the state is going to provide, that this comes back for another vote before the Board of Finance. And I think, given that this is a dual board that approves this, I think it would be fitting that we have that same request, that before we spend 2.1 million, we know how much we're going to get in that, from that state grant, so that we know the amount we're actually going to bond, given that we're about to go through budgets and capital budgets. I think we need to know the full amount before we, you know, rather than pieces.
Well, I think because it's at the Board of Finance, and this is actually the joint meeting, which means that that same motion was not with the council, I'll defer to the city clerk if she thinks it's proper to make an amendment to a joint board meeting, agenda item.
Well, if the amendment is to clarify what is on the agenda, I think that's acceptable according to FOI, because the item has been put on the special meeting notice. If it's something that changes, you know, the magnitude of the entire motion, then I think it wouldn't be. But you're talking about amending it just to add something else, to basically say that you're...
Well, that this wouldn't be final, that we get another chance to vote on this item, once we know the grant amount. That's basically what we've...
So it's basically a subject, too?
Uh huh.
And that's what the Board of Finance did.
Okay, then I think that that's okay.
Okay. So we have amendment to the motion, to have it mirror what was done at the Board of Finance meeting. Is there a second to that? Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment to the main motion first, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now back to the main, item 6, agenda item for approval. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion on the item? I just want... I did bring with me, and Dawn Ledger is here, and I just want to acknowledge her publicly. This is actually the full grant that was submitted last week. As you can tell, it was a lot of work, pulled together very quickly with the assistance of the Environmental Learning Centers, who are a partner on that. So I did bring it, if anybody would like to peruse it in between meetings. It was a great effort, and I'm looking very forward to having some type of response from the state in terms of what we will possibly get as a percentage. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7 is the approval of a resolution authorizing issuance of bonds or notes in the amount of $2.1 million for the acquisition of Shrub Road Parcels Open Space Grant Application.
Mayor, can I just stop you for one second? Can we just have, because it was a resolution, the last item? So if we could have a roll call vote, I'm sorry.
On both?
On both of these, yeah, both resolutions.
I mean, we don't need it on the amendment?
Correct.
Okay, so to go back to item 6, roll call vote, starting on my far left.
Yes.
I'm just kidding.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Motion passes. And so, moving on to item 7, which is the approval of the resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds, we'll do another roll call vote. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion on the motion for the approval of the resolution. Hearing none, I'd like to start on my right with Commissioner Lamoth.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to special agenda item 8, to transfer $70,000 from the Equipment Building Sinking Fund Contingency Account to the Operating Transfers Out Capital Projects.
So moved.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 9, to make an additional appropriation of $70,000 within the Capital Projects Fund funded by a transfer in from the Equipment Building Sinking Fund for the Police Court Complex Chiller.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 10 is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation from our controller.
Good evening, everyone. You have the report in front of you. Just a couple of things that I want to point out. Through January, our tax revenue collections are actually slightly ahead of where they were last year at this point. I met with the... We've been meeting with all of the departments with their budgets, and when we last met with the tax collector, we kind of did a little comparison of last year at this time compared to now, and we're about 1 percentage more in collections than we were last year. So I think that's really, really good at this point. I did mention last month that our motor vehicle supplemental bill, the billings were more than we had anticipated during the budget, so I think we will bring in between $7,000 to maybe $900,000 more, depends on the collections of those. Those are... The car taxes are the more difficult ones to collect, but I anticipate that we will overachieve that line item. Building permit revenue right now is at 84.3 percent. Convent's tax is coming in strong at 73.3. And as I had mentioned at the last meeting, I knew our investment earnings were coming in really strong, and right now we're at 131 percent of what we had budgeted. So if those numbers stay strong through the end of this fiscal year, which I anticipate they will, I think we'll collect almost as much as we did last year, over $1.1 million. So that's looking well there as far as surpluses go. On state revenue, since I sent this report out, there are two items that I do want to update you on. We did receive just an update, and we did get this last year in January timeframe, and it changed in the May timeframe. We got an update to the ECS grant. The ECS grant always has on it any adjustments for prior year excess cost adjustments as a result of the audit. Right now, it looks like our ECS grant will be short about $200,000 because of prior year excess cost adjustments. Now, like I said, this is the report now. We're hoping, I did speak with the superintendent, and we're hoping that by the time the final numbers come out, they get better and we don't have what happened last year. So we'll just keep an eye on that. The other thing, just to report, last year's number was $500,000 that we didn't get. I know the school, the Board of Ed, is still working very hard to try to get legislation passed so that the city can recoup some of that money. I know the business manager, the finance director at the Board of Ed went through and did a whole audit of the excess cost, Special Ed Excess Cost Grant amounts and all their costs, and I know that there are some items in there that they're hoping that they can recoup. So we're hoping out of that $500,000 we didn't get last year, we'll get some of that, and then we'll just keep an eye on the $200,000 for this year. So right now, that's the only area, right now, on the revenue side that has me cause for concern. Everything else, like I just mentioned, is doing relatively well. On the expenditure side, you know what? We've been meeting with the departments on their budgets. There's nothing that's coming to our attention that is cause of concern at this point. We will keep monitoring that. Of course, you know, we have to watch the rest of the snow season and how that goes, but right now, there's nothing that has come to our attention that I want to mention at this point. The first review of the budgets with the Board of Finance is scheduled for February 26th. It's immediately following the Board of Finance meeting. The plan is to have a lot of the smaller departments presented at that meeting, so those, you know, shouldn't... It should not be a long meeting to get through all of those. There are not a lot of changes in those smaller departments. We did send the schedule out, and I think, Jody, might have sent it out to all the Board of Finance members, but I'll make sure the City Council gets some. Did you send it to the City Council?
The Council got it as well today.
Okay, so that's the schedule that we're working with right now and where everybody's scheduled to be at the meetings and present. Most of the larger departments are scheduled to present, and again, if there's anybody that has any questions on any of the other departments, by all means, get word to me, to my office, and we will definitely get you the answer or have the department head at the meeting. Also at the Board of Finance meeting in February, Bloom Shapiro, the town's auditor... the city's auditors will be presenting the audit, so I think I mentioned that last month as well, if anybody is interested in hearing what they have to say. So with that, that's kind of all I have for tonight. Does anybody have any questions? No?
Thank you, Diane. Okay, is there any... There's no other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will start the City Council meeting in about three minutes. Okay, good evening and welcome to the February special meeting of the City Council. And again, for those of you who are joining us, if you're able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the members of the City Council to introduce themselves, starting on my far right.
Peter Kelly, District 2.
Greg Hahn, District 1.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Dave Mills, District 3.
Josh Maderos, District 1.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zappo-Sassu. For our moment of reflection tonight, I'd like to ask everyone to pause and have a moment of silence for four public servants that we've lost within the last month. State Representative Stephen Duffy, who represented the 77th District, Terry Barton, who served as the Chair of our Aging Commission, and many other groups and organizations in town, and two members of our Board of Education, Janar Dolan and Beverly Bobrowski. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on January 8th, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion or clarification needed on the minutes presented? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public participation, of which we've had no public signups in the hallway. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the City Council, who either didn't know about the signup sheet or got here too late to do so? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to announcements, and it is my pleasure tonight to use the employee recognition part of our agenda to introduce and appoint through nomination three new department heads, which is going to make my job much easier. We, for the last several months, have been searching for a Human Resources Director, a Public Works Director, and a Parks Superintendent. So tonight, I'm going to ask the council to move the nominations that I put forward, and then we are going to briefly hear from the three people that will be joining City Hall. The first one is no surprise. It is the appointment and nomination of Raymond Rogazinski as the Director of Public Works for a four-year term beginning on February 14th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Ray's a 22-year veteran of our Public Works Department, and I am so pleased to see him being promoted from within and joining us at the department head level. I believe he's here tonight with his wife, Carla. Ray, do you want to come up and just say a few words? And while he's walking up here, how about we do all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think that'll make him feel a little better.
Just so he won't be nervous when he's speaking, that we haven't voted yet.
It's going to depend on your speech.
Thank you very much for appointing me. It's truly an honor to be appointed Director of Public Works. Bristol is truly a great city, and there's a lot of great employees in the Department of Public Works. I look forward to, you know, working with some of them, plowing city streets all last night. They literally got here in the morning and worked all through the night, you know, plowing city streets. Some of them, you know, picked up your refuge and your recyclables when you were, you know, are at work. We truly have a lot of good employees. You know, engineers, laborers, crew leaders, a wide variety of, you know, people work for the department doing, you know, very important tasks. I truly look forward to, you know, working with them and providing leadership, you know, for the department, you know, to take it to the next step and working with council. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I would just like to recognize there are several members of the Public Works staff here with us tonight, and thank you for coming and supporting Ray as he starts this new part of his career with the city of Bristol. Our next appointment is to... I will put forward the nomination and ask for the appointment of Mark Penny as our Director of Human Resources for a four-year term beginning on March 4th, 2019. Mark is from the town of Canton. He is currently a sergeant. He has his law degree, and I know many of you have not had the opportunity to meet him in person, but he is with us tonight, and as we vote on that appointment, I'd like to ask him to step forward and say a few words as well, so everyone can see him.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. I'm not very long-winded, though. I'm sure my wife would disagree. I would just like to say thank you to the mayor, to the City Council, for appointing me to this position. I'm greatly honored, and I am looking forward to serving the people of Bristol, starting in early March. Thank you.
Great, thank you. You do have many of your colleagues here, so those of you, department heads who are here, please make sure to introduce yourself. Mark will be starting on March 4th with the Human Resources Department. Thank you. And the third and final appointment is a nomination brought forward for the appointment of Joshua Maderos as Superintendent of Parks and Recreation for a four-year term beginning February 20th, 2019. This is very bittersweet, because I, as much as I hate losing Josh from the City Council, there is no one better suited to lead our Parks Department than he. So at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion from his colleagues.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm assuming you will be abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, and I will now yield the floor to you.
Great. Thank you. So obviously, this is a bit of a unique situation, sitting on this side of the table, but recently I applied for the Bristol Parks and Rec Superintendent vacancy this past September... or December, excuse me. I was fortunate enough to advance through the city of Bristol's recruitment process and ultimately was selected for the role. I'm proud to say that I've accepted the position. As a result, I feel that my role as a city councillor would present a conflict of interest, so at this time, reluctantly, I am going to officially announce my resignation from the Bristol City Council, effective February 19th, 2019. This was not an easy decision, as I have thoroughly enjoyed my time serving as a city councilman representing the first district. In this capacity, I have been able to make contributions to the boards I served on and the community at large. Very briefly, I would like to thank the citizens of Bristol that supported me and granted me the opportunity to serve the city. I would like to thank the mayor, my fellow city councillors, and the city staff, all of whom have been great to work alongside with the past 16 months. When weighing this decision, I reflected on where I felt I could make the greatest impact to the city, and ultimately, I felt following my passion for Parks and Recreation was the right choice. I believe that parks are the most powerful aspect of every community. I believe Parks and Recreation services should be accessible and available to all people, regardless of income level, ethnicity, gender, ability, or age. Access to parks is a right, not just a privilege. Parks have the power to strengthen communities, transform lives, and protect the future. I'm excited for the opportunity to lead and work with the Bristol Parks and Recreation team once again, to make the Bristol Park System the best in the state. In closing, I was honored to serve District 1 as their city councilman, and I look forward to serving the entire city of Bristol as a new Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
So, the mechanism for this is Josh will begin on February 20th. We will have a vacancy in District 1 for approximately two weeks, while the Democratic Town Committee vets and forwards me a candidate to fill out the remainder of his term. Per the charter, because we are within the nine-month window of the November election, I am able to appoint to fill that vacancy. And then the Democratic Town Committee will likewise choose to nominate for July, their slate that will run in November. So we will have a little bit more work for Councilman Hahn to do in the ensuing two weeks for District 1, but I think that that will be the best course of action for us, and he will be joining us, actually, on the day of the monthly Park and Rec Board meeting, next Wednesday. And again, thank you to the Parks Board Commissioners, as well as the staff who are here for this announcement tonight as well. I appreciate you being here. Okay, moving on, we will move to the Consent Calendar, which is agenda item 5. And we have several items, A through J. Does anybody have anything on the Consent Calendar that they would like to pull off for further discussion? And for one clarification, earlier this week, we did have discussion about items E and F, and, I'm sorry, E for Jerome Avenue Bridge and why it's on while it's also being vetted by the 10-Year Capital Improvement Committee. That is because it's on the Consent Calendar in terms of applying for the bridge grant. It is not the actual item. So that's why that item is there. Does anybody have any items they need to discuss? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the reports and committee reports. I will start with Councilman Fortier for 6A, which was going to be a report from the Transportation Committee.
Yes. This item, Lime Bike Scooter Initiative, there is some detail, if someone goes online and clicks on that agenda item, that explains this, what this company wanted to do. They want to provide scooters that would be accessible here in Bristol. You would have an app on your phone, and you'd be able to access them, unlock them, by getting an account with this company. And then you could use that scooter in Bristol, and there might be some limitations on exactly where you could go in Bristol, but primarily, you could go anywhere in Bristol. And so, we were very excited at the Transportation Commission to hear about this opportunity, because we felt this is something that particularly young people are interested in. Other communities have different sorts of bikes and scooters available as an alternative means of transportation. And so, the company was very excited, and we have, I guess it's a draft agreement that's in our agenda. But earlier in the week, we did hear from the company that they themselves are holding back on entering into new contracts with new cities at this point. We don't know exactly the details of why that is, but the Transportation Commission was enthusiastic about supporting this, and when the company is ready to go forward, we hope the City Council can support it.
Thank you. So no action required. The next five are from the Salary Committee? 6B?
Yes. Item 6B is to approve an upgrade to the position of Grants Administrator from BPSA Salary Grade 7 to BPSA Salary Grade 9, effective January 22nd, 2019, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
So for those of you who may not be aware, we have eliminated another position within the BDA, and we are combining duties with our existing Grants Administrator, who will receive a code upgrade in deference to those additional duties. Is there any discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. With no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C is to change the title of the Programming Public Relations Manager to Assistant Library Director/Program Director, and upgrade the position from BPSA Salary Grade 5 to BPSA Salary Code 7, effective July 1st, 2019.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? In the case of items 6C and 6D, we are looking to correlate the two titles of the assistants in those respective departments to better reflect the duties associated with it and the responsibilities associated with it. So you will see the next motion mirrors that from the Department of Aging. So as to 6C, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion or comments regarding 6C, which is the Programming Public Relations Manager, changing to the Assistant Library Director/Program Director? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6D?
6D is to upgrade the Department of Aging position of Assistant Director/Program Supervisor from BPSA Salary Code 5 to BPSA Salary Code 7, effective July 1st, 2019.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6E?
6E is to approve changes to salaries and benefits of full-time and part-time non-bargaining employees as presented, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so for the viewing audience, this is a salary schedule that's presented annually for employees that are not attached to a bargaining unit, of which there are approximately 17, I believe. Is there any questions, concerns, or comments regarding 6E, the non-bargaining employee salary schedule? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6F?
6F is to approve, effective July 8th, 2019, an upgrade to the position of Assessor from BPSA Salary Code 10 to BPSA Salary Code 11, and to approve an upgrade of the incumbent Assessor from BPSA Salary Level 10 Step 6 to BPSA Salary Level 11 Step 6.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item 6G is the update from the Memorial Boulevard School Inter-District Building Committee. Councilman Proleski.
Thank you, Mayor. The Building Committee meets every two weeks, the second and fourth Thursday of the month. We meet in the, at 6:30 at the Board of Education building, Room 36. If, on the consent agenda tonight, we approve the, a contract for the commissioning agent, which is the entity that really looks at all of the mechanicals and the, all of the systems that are installed in the building, who are performing at maximum efficiency. We, we get reports at each meeting from the construction manager, the architect, and it's moving along. We watch the, the timeline for construction very carefully, and the Program Committee has been meeting with the architects to make sure that the intended curriculum will have sufficient space, appropriate space, to carry out the mission for the school. And our next meeting, I think, if I hadn't mentioned it already, is tomorrow night at 6:30, and the public's invited. Information is on both the Board of Education website and the city website now, so there's, I think it's easily more attainable. So, if there's any old questions, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. The next report is the Mayor's Task Force on Opioid Prevention. We do have one interesting statistic that I'd like to share with the audience. We just received a report from the Department of Public Health for the second half of 2018, and the preliminary data from the epicenter of the syndromic surveillance system, which is the state's attempt to bring all data into one system, is indicating that the rate of emergency room visits for suspected opioid-involved overdoses was stable between the third and fourth quarters of 2018 in Connecticut, and below the average for the previous year. However, although our rate is stabilizing in Connecticut, or even decreasing in some areas, and there is a county data map, and Bristol is in the decreasing area, Connecticut's suspected opioid overdose emergency room visit rate was still about 1.7 times higher than the national rate. So there is still work to do. We continue to meet, and we have several points of interest. We recently sent a letter to convenience stores and gas stations, asking them to better monitor how they're displaying items that could only be purchased by people over the age of 18, that are close to the counter. We are also working on vaping and other things, and these posters are about to be deployed in schools and other public areas, where it says, "If you don't think vaping is addictive, it may have already altered your brain," with some resources at the bottom. So we are partnering with Best for Bristol, which is an initiative of the Department of Youth Services. We are monitoring data. We are working with EMS and, as well as parent and families, to deal with our $150,000 grant, which is to offer recovery coaches for families. So, it's a fast-moving committee, and we're always looking for interested people to come and participate, or give their observations. And I believe the next meeting is next week, on the 21st. Moving on to other committees, do we have anything from real estate? Do we have anything from ordinance?
Thank you, Your Honor. A very brief ordinance report. Our next ordinance meeting is next Wednesday, the 20th, at 5 o'clock here at City Hall. We're working on several issues, a couple of which are, as a result of the charter revision work last, last year, and approved in last November. We're cleaning up the pension language in many areas. We are working on defining a Human Resources Committee, which we hope to present to the mayor and the council, hopefully, in the next month or two. And we're looking into licensing of massage parlors. Lastly, and one motion for the council tonight, Mayor, is on senior tax relief. We have a motion presented and prepared by the Ordinance Committee, if I can read it. On behalf of the Ordinance Committee, I move that the mayor establish a committee pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 12-129N, subsection B, to study and investigate additional property tax relief for homeowners aged 65 or over, or the permanently disabled, and that the committee prepare a report of its findings to the Board of Finance and the City Council.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. What is our timeline for this?
Well, we hope to have this thing prepared so that we'll have a, have it completed and to the council before the next fiscal year begins.
And what are some of the goals, the objectives of this?
Well, the Connecticut General Statute has given us other authorities in terms of other enhancements or tax benefits for the group mentioned, and we want to look into that and investigate how it would fit in Bristol.
Okay. So is my understanding that it needs to be a five-member panel?
It does.
So, I did put together a five-member panel, which apparently, I'm not allowed to appoint tonight.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. It's an hour of my afternoon, I won't be getting back today.
Which will be all ready when you're ready to appoint them.
So we will have a five-member panel comprised of three Democrats and two Republicans, who will be looking at this issue, starting at whatever point you tell me I can appoint them.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. Did we vote on this, Theresa? Okay. Are there any further comments or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other committee reports to my left?
None.
None.
None for me.
Yes, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things. Last month, I had the honor of introducing and presenting a proclamation from the mayor to Mike Reese. Mike Reese, for those that don't know, is an author. He writes for The Simpsons TV show, and has for about 28 seasons. Among other things, he's written for Johnny Carson and Pope Francis, as a matter of fact. But at this event, he spoke about his experience with The Simpsons, and how Bristol influenced the characters that, some of the characters that he's written, and it was a great evening. And he asked me to pass this along to the mayor. It's a, it's his book he wrote last year. He inscribed it to you. He's very appreciative of your consideration. The reason I mention this now is because the Arts and Culture Commission is working with Mike to come in to do a similar presentation for Bristol, for residents of Bristol. There's many people that came up to me and asked if they could, if this was going to be happening in our town, because the presentation I made last month was in West Hartford, and many couldn't go. So, we're in conversations with Mike, and we're going to look to do that in the next few months. So, that's the City Arts and Culture Commission. Another item that's come up is, has been finalized with the Commission on Aging, that they are going to present three concerts this summer for senior citizens at the Senior Center. It's going to be directed, the music is going to be directed toward the seniors and their families. It's going to be a rather large event, and we're looking for outdoor concerts. And the dates on these concerts are June 23rd, July 21st, and August 18th. The director is working, Director Tom Sack is working on getting the talent for the concerts, and we'll have more on that in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
Yes, I do. I have two, Mayor, one for the, from the Board of Ed, the other's early childhood. And the first one regarding the Board of Ed, Dr. Moreau recently announced that the Bristol Public Schools were awarded two Community Learning Center grants, and both grants are to be distributed over a five-year period, starting this July. West Bristol has been awarded $574,000, and Bristol Central $250,000. And insofar as Bristol Central is concerned, this is the first time that they've received a grant of this type, first time awarded to high school students. And the purpose of these grants is to provide opportunities for academic enrichment, and this is after school. This is above and beyond the regular school hours. And the way this is done is through tutoring for academic enrichment for sub, for core subjects, math, reading, science. And there's also preventative counselling regarding drugs, violence, and pregnancy. And this also encompasses tutoring insofar as art, music, and technology programs. And the next announcement is in regards to early childhood education. And on March 1st, the Bristol community will be losing two iconic fixtures in early childhood education. Marilyn Lubacheski started her career in 1971, and 48 years later, she's retiring. And she has been a teacher, an executive director, and a grant manager. Shirley Anderson is the second person that's retiring, and she entered the early childhood realm in 1994, 1995. And she started as the director of the Head Start Program. And in 1995, Marilyn was representing the Bristol preschool, and Shirley, the Head Start Program. And along with Robin Bugbee, collectively, they wrote and submitted the first school readiness grant ever in the city of Bristol. Combined between Marilyn and Shirley, they have touched the lives of over 10,000 children throughout the city. And that is quite an impactful career. So fast forward to 2016. A total of $4,650,000 of state bonding money was awarded, and the former Jennings School on Burlington Avenue was conceived and completed, offering infant and toddler care, the first agency in Bristol to offer this. So they started with a small childcare center in the basement of a church, and this has now grown to a state-of-the-art facility that serves 127 preschool children and 40 infant and toddlers. So thank you to these two women. They're both under-the-radar type of people, but they do such good work, and it's so impactful. So thank you very much for your service. I'd also like to share, everyone is invited. It's an open-house retirement party, celebrating both these ladies' accomplishments, and it's March 7th, which is a Thursday, from 6 till 7:30. And no surprise, this will be at the Bristol Preschool Childcare Center on Burlington Avenue, and you're all invited. And please, no gifts, but donations to the center would be accepted. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, we're going to recommend some charter sections, and while we're doing that, I did want to point to our announcements. There are many things happening that the community should be aware of. This is also going to be incorporated by Nutmeg when they rebroadcast. So for those of you who have an opportunity to look up, hopefully, there'll be some events that is interesting to you, that you can help support within the community. For the charter revision, which we impaneled last month, we have four items that we would like to send for their initial review, knowing that they, as a Charter Revision Commission, can take up other items as well. Does everybody have this?
Yes.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion on the first one, which is Water and Water Pollution Control?
I can do that, Your Honor. To review the December 2018 charter amendments consolidating the operations of the Water and Water Pollution Control Departments, and to consider any additional changes that are needed to clarify and remove any ambiguities as to the responsibility and oversight of these functions.
Okay. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? For clarification, this is because we did the main chapter, and that was approved by the voters. We have since found that there are a few niggling references in other sections that need to be addressed as well, in order to allow Superintendent Longo to fully implement and integrate what he's looking to do. So we will forward that one. Any further questions or comments about the first item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Maderos, do you have this?
Yes, I got it.
Would you like to do the police one, since you are the liaison?
Sure. Two is to review the provisions in Charter Sections 45, 46A, and 46B, applicable to the Police Department's testing procedures and waiting given to elements of the promotion process, to determine whether any provisions have been superseded by contract, and therefore should be removed from the charter, and to propose other changes to better conform to modern-day best practices and methods. And then, Item B is to divide the responsibilities of oversight of the Police Department between the Police Chief and the Board of Police Commissioners, to determine whether the intent of any provisions are better served by the adoption of ordinances, and therefore should be removed from the charter, and to propose other changes to better conform to modern-day best practices and methods. And then finally, Item C, to review the job descriptions in the charter pertaining to the Police Department's oversight structure, to determine whether any provisions have been superseded by contract, and therefore should be removed from the charter, and therefore should be removed from the charter, and to propose other changes to better conform to modern-day best practices and methods.
That's a motion. Is there a second? Conversation. I have a question. 2B, is that divide, is that the appropriate word, or should it be define?
I would think define, because divide suggests that the Police Commission's going to have
Yeah.
...a role and oversight of the Police Department.
Can we make an amendment?
I don't know.
To the language?
Is it, can we, can we replace that with divide? Define?
What, what originally it was, it was to review the division of responsibilities.
Okay.
So maybe you would, it would be more...
Let's change that, to review the division of the responsibilities. I think that makes it, makes divide fit better than it currently is.
Okay.
Okay.
So, can I make an, make a motion to amend the recommendation to start Item B with "Review the Division of Responsibilities"?
Yes. Okay. Is that a friendly amendment, Councilman Maderos?
Yes.
Okay. So we are going to now vote on the motion, the amendment to, to B, to refine that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, on the entire motion, that is comprised of 2, A, B, and C, to send those components to the Charter Revision Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on the police items going to charter revision? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Han, do you have this in front of you?
Yes, I do, Your Honor.
You can do Item 3, please.
To review Section 12A, which does not have each paragraph labeled with the letter A, B, C, and so forth. The last two paragraphs of this section reference subsections, paragraphs A and B, but those subsections with letters need to be created.
Okay. So this is a technical revision that has been detected by the Town and City Clerk, that we'd like to forward to charter revision. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
My only question is, what, what is Section 12A about? Not that it matters, because it's technical, I understand, but I'm just curious. Okay, that's fine.
It's one that actually had a want for a change in 2015, and the charter revision at that time, when they did it, probably add in the A, B, C, but then the, the last two sections reference, go back to 12A.
Okay.
And 12A D. And there is no 12AA in the charter.
Okay. So, technical revision to 12A. Any further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Councilman Han, why don't you do 42, since that's another technical revision, no, it's not technical, another request from the Town and City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor. To review Section 19, which refers to an alphabetical list of voters sent by the registrars of voters to the Town Clerk's office. The registrars do not forward a list because the Town Clerk's office is connected to CVRS, which contains all voters.
The technology has caught up with our charter. Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Any further conversation on Item 4, referencing Section 19? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, the first one is the update on shared services and regional initiatives. There are a few minor ones that I just wanted to, in the interest of continuing the conversation about what we do with our neighbors. Recently, last month, we had a Call Before You Dig safety training that was organized by our Superintendent of Water, Rob Longo, and because we had space, and it was a free program, we tendered invitations to our neighbors, Plymouth?
Burlington.
Burlington and Plainville, who joined us in the council chambers for that very educational training. We also have done walk-in talks with our public schools in conjunction with our Police Department for probably the last, is this the second academic year? And recently, when I was in my office, I heard on the radio that they have also now expanded that to actually do the preschools in town. So even younger age now being exposed to a friendly police officer within their classrooms. As you know, the Bristol preschool is not part of our system, but again, I applaud the Police Department for taking the initiative and partnering with that nonprofit as well. And then... And then, the really big partnership that I wanted to just reference again is the last month, working with both a private landowner as well as the Barnes Nature Center to put together what I hope is a winning grant for that 64 acres. Somebody took my grant book. What did I do with it? Okay. Just hold it up, so everybody can see it. It's a great application. I think Don Ledger is still here. Don, stand up and wave, our grant writer. Stand up, Don. So, that is, I think, a really important public-private partnership that will hopefully yield a very strong benefit for the city. So, that grant file, if anybody else wants to take a look at it, and it's also in my office, but a great effort between a lot of parties sharing a similar agenda, which is rooted in our plan of development, which is really the bible for the city in terms of what we think Bristol should look like in the next 10 years. So, for those of you who were wondering why we woke up one morning and decided to put in that grant application, we are following the Open Space Acquisition Chapter, which is in our plan of development. And I also wanted to reference the continued partnership between Water and the Sewer Water Pollution Control. They are working through a lot of those recommendations from charter, and so far, it's going very well. So, we'll continue to work on that and hopefully see some increased efficiencies and cooperation very shortly. Legislative update. So, because it is legislative season with a new administration, I did work with our department heads. Josh, you don't get one, because I didn't have enough, so you're out. I'm going to keep one. I'm going to pass out our legislative, our legislative priorities that we've accumulated and just briefly touch on them. They range from environmental management and energy. We're looking at virtual net metering credit. This has been raised in energy and technology. And this is to eliminate the cap on virtual net metering for municipal customer hosts, which is important to us for some of our future options. We're obviously going to be monitoring grant opportunities, specifically open space, but other ones as they come along. We're looking to monitor some bills that are coming out of the planning and development, including zoning regulations and how they regulate signs that are considered advertising. So, that one was interesting. And we're also looking to do, looking to establish municipal options for property tax abatements for arts and culture projects, which could help us with what we might want to do downtown. We are looking at some legislation based on some activity here last year about having a better handle on building permit applications filed by group homes. Currently, they are exempt from the land use process. So, the bill that we're following that we thought was the best one coming out of that committee is to allow a municipal planning commission, zoning commission, or combined commissions to review a building permit application filed by a group home that wishes to expand an existing facility from which a high volume of emergency and police calls originate in order to determine the best interest of the neighbors. So, that one, we thought, was the best one to monitor. We've also, in coming out of the negotiating process, we had a lot of Janus impact on our contract language. So, there's a labor bill that we're looking at, which would clarify the authorization process for payroll deductions, which would help us communicate better what our responsibilities are as well as the responsibility of the bargaining units. We have some public safety and some crime prevention. We're looking to bring some additional funding to our regional fire schools that we rely upon to alleviate the burden on our fire marshals, which have language that says that they shall inspect annually as opposed to May, so it's a burden there. We're looking at some additional revenue opportunities to municipalities, and that does include the sales tax proposal. We're interested in the Siting Council and having local representation so that decisions aren't made about our community without us having a voice. I personally am monitoring the statewide motor vehicle mill rate, which I think would be interesting, as well as cut down on a lot of work in our assessor's office. Also, the Professional Association that our assessor belongs to is monitoring the exemption of personal property business assets with a $10,000 value threshold. And just as an explanation, if this were implemented, Bristol could realize an assessment loss of approximately $6.5 million or an unfunded mandate of approximately $240,000. So, CCM and the City of Bristol will be opposing that. And then, there's something called a conservator initiative that I've been following that is, would help us to deal with some eliminated, abandoned, and blighted properties. There is a pilot program in Pennsylvania that we're going to be watching. The Purchasing Agents Association submitted many bills that we're looking at that are very substantive to how we do contracts. We also are monitoring industrial wastewater permits, which came up today, is in effect on Bristol. And then, obviously, there's a variety of education bills that, like the Board of Education, we're watching, mostly from the financial aspect in regard to MBR and special education and how they're funded. And also, one, expediting DCF investigations of claims of abuse and neglect to the 45-day window is one that I thought was interesting as well. Concussion education would be not an unfunded mandate. That is a free program. And then, we're looking at some municipal broadband services legislation. I, myself, am serving on a task force for PTSD for our firefighters and police officers to come up with some working language that would also identify a funding source. And there was an interesting one, that there's a group on pension reform. And one of their great ideas, because most of them are underfunded, is to combine all 206 municipal pension funds, which, of course, we will oppose because we are currently overfunded at 149, 149 still. So, that would definitely not be in Bristol's best interest. The opioid task force is obviously monitoring a bunch of e-cigarette and tobacco use and vaping products and also raising the age of consumption to 21. We are monitoring a bill about the publication of legal notices on municipal internet websites. We currently spend about $40,000 a year placing ads for public notice. It'd be nice to have some options or a little bit of flexibility on that. And we will stand, continue to stand with our neighbors at Bristol Hospital on the hospital tax as well as Medicaid reimbursement funding, which is affecting their operations. We, PURA has a municipal gain dispute, which I'm monitoring, because that will affect how we use our polls. And we have a big issue with our Bristol Facility Policy Board and the 14 communities that use Cavanta and how we dispose of our recyclable materials, what we're paying for our host fees, the entire China issue, and how we are now going to not get a credit for recycling and having best practices we are going to have to pay to dispose of our recycling. That is about a $300,000 hit on our budget. In addition to that, the state is actually talking about giving state aid to Hartford-Samarah Facility, which has had some catastrophic failures. But we believe that if the state is going to have that, talk about how it's important to be regional, that those communities that use Hartford should figure out and pay for those costs, not necessarily the communities such as us and our 13 partners that don't use that facility. So, that about wraps that up. For those of you who are interested in legislative review, I would welcome you taking on some of the monitoring. We have had the pleasure of having former Councilman Calvin Brown working part-time in the office as he awaits his job in Hartford. And he has been a huge help in taking care of this for me. If we don't monitor and we don't testify and we don't have our voices heard, then Bristol is left out of the conversation in Hartford. So, we'll be forwarding this to our friends in Hartford as well and looking forward to watching what some of the outcome is of this legislative session. The Controller and I were talking earlier today. This is a long session, and it runs until June 5th. So, we do have the opportunity to exercise our charter and ordinance language in terms of when we adopt a budget, which we may have to talk about as we go through this process, depending on how the state ends up with their budget. I think that's it. If any of you come across anything in any of your readings or anything from the committees that you are attached to that you want to add to this list, please send it my way and we'll add it. Okay. I'm going to turn the council agenda over to our Town and City Clerk now, and she will begin with our resignations.
There were four resignations. The first was from Teresa Barton. She submitted her resignation, and fortunately, she did pass away in the interim. So, again, although she did resign prior to her passing away. Also, Jesse Gallagher resigned from the City Arts and Culture Commission. Kimberly Carmelich from the Youth Commission. And Mary Ann Erickson from the Housing Code Appeals Board.
I'd like to entertain a motion to place those resignations on file and send those commissioners a letter of thanks for their service.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item, oh, sorry. Item 10 is the appointments.
So, for the City Arts and Culture Commission, I would like to first appoint Andrea Adams to replace Alexandra Thomas, who is a Section 2-9 resignation, for an unexpired term to May of 2019.
Second.
Someone needs to make the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second one is to appoint Mark Stephen Wilisiak, Jr., to replace Jesse Gallagher, resigned, unexpired term to May of 2021.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the appointment. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next motion is to reappoint Tom Hick for a five-year term to February of 2024 to the Bristol Development Authority.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is to, is the mayor's appointment to appoint Carolyn Chekovides to replace Tammy Kelly as an alternate member, unexpired term to January of 2021 due to Tammy Kelly's elevation to full member on the Inland Wetlands Commission. So, that is effective upon appointment. The next one is to reappoint Donald Padlo, a three-year term to February of 2022 for the Board of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I think this will bring Don way past his 50 years of service on city boards and commissions with this appointment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To appoint Mike LaMoth to replace Cheryl Tebow, three-year term to February of 2022 on the Retirement Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Youth Commission, to appoint Cory Nagle to replace Kim Carmelik, resigned, private youth representative, unexpired term to June of 2021. And for those of you who may not know, Kim Carmelik is leaving our Youth Commission because she is taking on the job of replacing Shirley and Marilyn at Bristol Preschool as their head person. So, congratulations to Kim and welcome to Cory to our Youth Commission, who is a science teacher in the Bristol Public School System as well.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will put my five names for senior tax relief off to the side.
Item 11, Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to Execute a Contract Amendment to Contract 2-Piece 1663B for $115,400 with Malone &amp; McBrum Incorporated and any other necessary documents for additional work related to the design of parking, traffic signal, streetscape, and walkway on Main Street, Center Square, and Riverside Avenue, and to take any action as necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the contract amendment. And this, for those of you aware, it was for the Riverside Avenue street improvements that we discussed at the last meeting. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12 is approval of the Energy Supply and Services Agreement by and between Dusen Energy Solutions America Incorporated and City of Bristol for placement of fuel cell on city-owned property at 75 Batista Road. Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute and to take any action as necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? The fuel cell is going to be placed at the Water Pollution Control Authority on Batista Road. It is our highest energy consumer of all of our city facilities. So, it's going to be an interesting experiment to see how that works with hopefully our new Energy Commission monitoring it as well as the department. It will hopefully reduce some of our consumption issues. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13, Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to Execute Agreement with Eversource Energy to Perform Eversource Work Waters 2M821495 and 1864W011 on Hope Street for $126,915.14. Sign any and all documents and to take any action as necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 14, To Consider Proposed Contract Agreement, Consent Agreement, DWS 1917-1 between the City of Bristol and the Connecticut Department of Public Health. Authorize the Mayor or Acting Mayor to sign said agreement and to take any action as necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have two executive sessions, and we also have an addenda item. So, can I have a motion to move to the addenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May we take the addenda item before we go into executive session? Or did you add it? Was that the water, the consent agreement? We did it. Okay. So, we don't have an addenda? Okay, you incorporated it?
Yes.
So, we're clear?
Yes.
Okay. Then, I'd like to ask Corporation Counsel Cliff to come up and talk to us about our executive session on Walmart and the one for City Hall and who will be joining us.
All right. For number 15, the executive session to discuss the litigation matter of Walmart Real Estate Business Trust versus City of Bristol, that will be Assistant Corporation Counsel Conlon, myself, and Tax Assessor Tom Tenoto. And then, for the last one, to discuss the proposal to relocate City Hall to 10 Main Street, will be Assistant Corporation Counselors Lacy, Conlon, and Steg, and myself, along with Controller Diane Waldron, Assessor Tom Tenoto, Purchasing Director Roger Rousseau, God, I get to say this, Public Works Director Ray Rogazinski, and also, of course, Michael Goman from our consultants, Goman and York.
So, are we taking them in order, 15 and 16?
Yes. Let's do number 15 first and then the others.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session on Agenda Items 15 and 16.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will be back in public session, hopefully shortly.